I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the time is six P M. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Before we get started, I'd like to thank members of the public for attending this school board meeting to observe the work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. We appreciate the time you took to be here this evening. Dr. Hillman, we have some items in the table file.
Yes, this evening in the table file, we have the slide decks and the narratives for the debt service fund and the internal service fund budget presentations. Again, no action taken on those tonight. You'll be asked to approve those later this spring. We also have a number of items in the consent agenda because of spring break. Last week, we have all of the personal items were in the table file. There are a number of appointments, quite a few increase, decrease, changes in assignment. There are a couple of leaves of absences and a couple of resignations. In addition, one other item in the table file due to a super intense error. We do not have an enrollment report tonight, but we will have that for you at the next meeting.
Thank you. If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented by Jack? Second by Amy. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. And we do not have anyone signed up for public comment tonight, so we're moving on to the next item in our agenda, which is announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman, do you have any?
And I don't have any formal announcements or recognitions this evening, but I think you might want to recognize some students here.
Wanted to welcome the Global Study Students visiting us tonight. Good. I also wanted to congratulate you again for receiving your award this past week on the Administrators of Excellence Award. Good job. Any other announcements or comments? All right, we're moving on to item number five, items for discussion and reports. We have Erin Bailey, Director of Community Education, presenting our facility rental and service fees. This is an annual review and compliance with policy nine oh two, use of public district facilities and equipment procedures. Welcome, Erin. It's good to see you.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, board members. It's great to be here. This. Try it again. There you go. Just lit up red, but I don't.
There you go. A little closer.
A little closer.
There you go.
Okay, thanks. Good evening, board members. It's good to see you and for having me here tonight to review policy nine oh two, the district's facility use policy. This is just going to be a brief overview. You had information in your board packet that highlighted the past two years of facility usage. And as we all know, those have been two unique years of facility usage. So fiscal year twenties, the school year two thousand and nineteen twenty was a pretty typical year until mid-March. So the numbers there are reflected in the top half of the document. And then I reflect those numbers that we received last fiscal year. And you will know how we rented facilities that year was different. We did not open the district facility rentals until November ninth of two thousand and twenty-one. We then took a pause from November nineteenth through January fourth, and then we resumed rentals only to local sports associations on January fourteenth. And we did not open the school district facilities for outside facility rentals till July sixth, which would have been after the fiscal year. So that is why you see a significant change in those facility use numbers for last fiscal year. We did for last fiscal year and actually up until February twenty-first of this year, we did require all facility users to submit a COVID preparedness plan. Those were then reviewed by myself, Superintendent Hillman, Cheryl Hall as our director or our COVID coordinator for the district, and Bonnie Johnson. And so that those have now, we have now suspended that in light of the changes of the COVID protocols on the twenty-first of February. So with the limited use of school district facilities in the last two years, I don't recommend any changes to policy nine oh two. We did review it. Those of us that work heavily around the facilities and just at this point, like I said, we have not had significant use and would not recommend any changes to that policy. Also, in your packet was the the community use of school district facilities pamphlet. Many thanks to Amy. She sent me a very kind email this afternoon that shows we need to do an update of a building name in there. So we will correct that tomorrow and get that back on the website. I think that's because we were here before that name changed last year, so we had approved that before that name changed. So we will go back and change that tomorrow. But with that, I will take any questions.
Excellent. Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? Jeff.
Can you explain a little bit about, I mean, I don't know where we are and how we compare ourselves to as far as rental agreements? I would think that within our conference would be one good place to kind of look. Obviously, we want to be as open as possible as we can to the use for the public to use our buildings and also obviously welcoming. Can you explain a little bit? Because I've heard a lot of people say, and I know that when you rent out one of our facilities, it's the custodian, you know, fees that are in there, whatever. So what really is the formula that goes into when we rent out?
That's great. So the last time we did a survey of fees, actually, and that would be fees of every space within a building and custodial costs, things like that was when we changed this policy. So that would, those were the, what went into effect on July first, two thousand and twenty. So that's the last time we've done kind of Jeff, a large undertaking of a survey of multiple districts. I would say our, our fees are very much in line with those other districts in the big nine and those that were neighboring districts that maybe weren't part of the big nine. They're pretty modest fees if you're renting a gym or a classroom. In essence, if you're a nonprofit, we are charging you for the first two hours of the rental. And then after that, we're charging you of this electrical, if not using the right, utilities fees, I was going to say, I need to, I have this pulled up, but an energy fee is what it's called in the form, an energy fee after that. And then we have different categories, so not, local nonprofits would have the greatest reduction in prices and so far, and that's all spelled out in the, in that pamphlet that's online too. You are right, when, if a facility user chooses to use the building at a time it is not open. So no one pays for custodial fees if they're using the building during typical building hours. So during the Monday through Friday, that's every building from six or six thirty A M. until almost ten P M. at night. On the weekends, on Saturday, the middle school is open seven A M. to three, and the high school would be open two P M. until ten P M. or if there's a game going on that evening, and no buildings are open on Saturdays. So we always work with those that are interested in using the facilities to try to keep them within the building hours, if that is something that works for the group, so that they aren't paying custodial fees. But if we, if they are choosing to rent outside of those times, then we are asking our staff to come back in, and it's often overtime pay. And so that we are just passing the direct cost on. We are not charging any additional costs for those personnel fees. Does that answer your question, Jeff?
Good. Thank you. Anyone else comment or question? Great. Thank you so much, Erin. Oh, I'm sorry, Julie.
I had a comment. I just want to thank you for all your efforts. I mean, our facilities are a really vital community asset, and it's so really, it's great that we're able to to open our facilities and our community benefit from that. And of course, with you being here, we have to acknowledge and thank you for all of the work you have done this school year with COVID protocols and managing N C E C, particularly in light of early ventures being there and having, you know, that's really important that we were able to keep N C E C open and that we understand how difficult that would have been for families had there been some different situations that could have played out. So I know it was a very, very difficult time for you and your staff, and you rose to the occasion as you always do. And so we just want to express our appreciation and we hope that we, the better days ahead are here to stay that, that we're seeing and to extend our thanks to your staff because they really just did an incredible job of managing under very difficult circumstances. So, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. I will share that with them. And just as a, for the facilities, we, in a typical year, we, there are probably only a handful of days that we haven't had facility rentals. Now, that will, that will not be as common as we don't have a church that is renting at this time, because when we had a church renting, then we were essentially seven days a week doing facility rentals. But at this point, we, we see less rentals on Sundays, but almost every other day of the week, we have someone in facilities. And so we look, we are seeing now a pretty return to normal request of facility use from internal, local and non-local too.
Tom.
Are there any facilities that are in extra demand?
So the highest use of, is a gym, of course, and it can be, it doesn't, it doesn't matter which gym, any gym is pretty high use. When we talk about gyms, the ones that are probably most demand would be ones where baskets raise and lower, especially if they, if that's pretty easily done. Having volleyball standards in the floor is another issue, you know, something that's highly sought after too, but gyms would be the number one space that is rented.
Do you ever have to turn people away? And is there like a demand on a certain day that we just don't have enough?
Yeah, yes. So in the, what we do now is every typically August, we bring together all those youth, the tightest group is the Youth Sports Association, and it's heavy use. It's certain out, you know, early evening hours is kind of, if you want to call prime time, that would be prime time. And so what we do now in August is bring in all of those youth sports associations. We essentially ask them to help work it out together because on some level, they all want the same time, and there's only so much to go around. And so yes, we would be turning people away if we didn't use that method, if that makes sense. And potentially Bonnie Johnson and I, who's our facility scheduler, might have to help wrestle, facilitate a wrestling match. I'm not sure. So we found as best tactic as we can, which is to have them come together and really talk about what they need and then talk about how can we best share the resources that we have.
Great. Anyone else question or comment? Yeah, um, thank you, Erin. We appreciate your presentation, and I echo what Julie said. We appreciate all the work that you put into over the pandemic before and now, and yeah, just all your energy and passion.
Thank you, guys. Great to see you.
Right. Next, we have Director of Finance Val Mortis Tor presenting on the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three debt service fund budget. Welcome, Belle.
Move these around a little bit. It's going to block the view for anyone. All right. So I'm going to take a little bit more time than I normally would, just because this was in your table file and you didn't have it in advance. So I want to make sure if there's any questions that we get through all of that. So I'm going to start with debt service and talk through that proposed budget and the different things in there. Comes up. Did I break it already? Thank you. All right. So we'll talk a little bit about debt service and that budget. So I have this slide every year, just as a reminder, because we typically only talk debt service once or twice a year for Lucky. And so we are required by statute to levy one hundred and five percent of our debt payments. And so basically, we take our bond schedules, tally up that total, multiply that by one hundred and five, and that's what gets levied. We also do get some state aid for debt service, particularly for L T F M. And a newer component of that is the egg credit. So agricultural properties now get a credit on their school district taxes. And so we are basically, the state's paying us that money instead of the, through the local taxes. Um, there is also the offsetting for, we have one bond that is paid for with operating capital funds, and we have two now that are going to be paid out of L T F M. So they show up in debt service, and there's a levy for that amount, but there's an offsetting reduction in the levy revenue in the general fund. So it is net neutral for taxpayers, but it's a way for us to facilitate getting some projects complete without voter approval, because we have the access to those sources. The other financing sources is typically only used when we refund bonds or have capitalized interest in a project. So I'll talk through that when we get to the numbers and kind of what that looks like. The expenditure side is really straightforward. It is principal and interest in what we're paying. And then any other costs that are directly associated with the debt. So we pay an annual fee for payments for the debt as well as some reporting requirements and those sorts of things. And then the same thing, the other financing uses is kind of that offset for an unusual circumstance for refunding a bond or capitalized interest. So the revenue, as you can see, local property tax is really consistent year over year. That is actually really intentional on our behalf, because we want to make sure that the levy for taxpayers is consistent year over year and that they're not seeing wild swings in their taxes that they're paying for the school district. The investment interest, as you can see, has taken a pretty substantial dive due to the market conditions from the pandemic. And so we're, we're bringing that back down for the proposed budget to match really where it's at right now because of the market conditions. The state of Minnesota, you'll see, went from about six hundred and forty, almost six hundred and forty-nine thousand in nineteen twenty up to nine twenty-three. That is that phase in with the egg credit. So in the narrative, I put seventy, but it's actually sixty percent for pay twenty-two. It'll be seventy percent next year for pay twenty-three. So there have been, it was forty. Last year was fifty-five, this year sixty, and next year will be seventy, and that'll be the highest that it goes. And so we'll see an increasing amount in that state source line. So just, I have a million dollars between the state aid we get on our L T F M and that egg credit that we're getting. And then the other sources, so in two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, that ten point eight million dollars was the refunding of two bonds. So basically, what happens is kind of like refinancing your mortgage. We got a better interest rate. We save some money for the taxpayers. Basically, we get that money in, we sold bonds, and then we paid it out to pay off those old bonds. It's just an updated schedule with less interest. There's no actual benefit to the district other than saving the taxpayers' money, which we obviously take great pride in. The one for twenty-one, twenty-two in the revised budget. This is not a revised budget that I will ask you to approve, because this is the L T F M bond for the middle school roof. So you've inherently approved it by approving the bond, so we include that in the budget. So that was about three point two million, three point one two with the additional fees and all the things that get associated with that bond. And so then you'll see that offsetting amount on the expenditure side as well. We have that money right now sitting in a separate bank account, and February first, we will pay off. Or actually, this is the L T F M one. So this is the revenue, we'll pay the bonds off over time, but we will do the project transfer for that. So that is all of the revenue. So about six point two million is our total projected revenue for twenty-two, twenty-three, which has been pretty consistent historically. All right, on the expenditure side, again, fairly consistent year over year, the bond principal and interest ties directly to our debt schedules when we issue the bonds. The other debt service fees, you can see, one hundred and nine thousand is a direct result of the actual bond refunding. And then the three point two million in twenty-one, twenty-two is the L T F M bond for the middle school. So that will be kind of an in and out while we work through getting those funds in the construction account. For next year, we have about just shy of four million dollars for principal, about one point nine million for interest, and then seven thousand dollars for our other fees. Again, those are pretty consistent year over year about three different places. So they're pretty predictable. So about five point nine million in total expenditures. And so on the summary, it just takes where our fund balance is, puts those revenue and expenditures together to show our total fund balance. I would say one point two to one point five or even two million is kind of our average range. Once we start getting over two million, the state will kind of enhance that debt access calculation and make sure that they take that extra five percent and give it back to the taxpayers. And so that's that process, but that shows up in our levy amount, but one point nine million is where we're projected to end for twenty-two, twenty-three, which is a pretty, pretty normal range for, for this district and the amount of debt that we have. So leave. Oh, yep, this is just the detail. So we currently have five bonds. So the refunding bond in two thousand and twenty refunded the two thousand and eleven A and two thousand and twelve A, and that will be paid off in two thousand and twenty-five as well as the Greenbelt Park and High School roofs. That is the actual, our operating capital one. So those two will be done in two thousand and twenty-five. So you can see the two thousand and twenty-two is the bond that was just in front of the board a couple of meetings ago. One point nine five percent interest rate. Definitely missing a zero there. It's supposed to be three point one two million, not three hundred and twelve thousand. I will update that. We are only paying interest on that through two thousand and twenty-five, I believe, to make sure that that debt payment and levy is consistent for taxpayers. So you'll only see interest payments for the next couple of years, and then we'll jump into interest payments when some of the other bonds get paid off. So in total, this is all five of those bonds over the next twenty years and how much we will pay, assuming nothing else changes in the next twenty years, which we know is unlikely, but this is how it is today. So we've got a total of about sixty-six point nine million. They'll be paid back over the next twenty years. And you can see the two thousand and twenty-three line ties out to the principal and interest on the expenditure side. Any questions on debt service specifically?
Thank you, Val. Any questions, board members? Tom.
Thank you for the report. On the debt service revenue, you have local property taxes actually going down next year, I would think, just by the value of the the property, the taxes would always be going up.
So we actually levy a specific dollar amount. So if the property tax value goes up, that just means that our dollar amount is spread over more dollars essentially. But we only need the hundred and five percent. So that's the number that we are going to levy for, and so that is driven specifically off of our debt schedules. The other thing that can make it come down is that debt excess calculation. So in the levy, there's a whole, you know, ten-page, eight-point font calculation you can read that shows where our fund balance is. They take an average of the last three years. And so then we could have a net reduction in the levy for that. So that can bring it down also sometimes. But we only levy the specific dollar amount, plus the debt excess.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
No worries.
No. And then and then on the debt purpose, there's a maximum amount we can have?
Yes.
And will that change, given inflation is so high? I mean, because like a million dollars now is a million dollars five years ago.
Um, so the amount that we can actually levy for debt service is exorbitant. We would never meet the current cap. If we did, we would be run out of town. So it's extremely high. I've never seen a district actually meet their cap. So I'm not concerned about the current threshold. We, we will, costs are going up. We're going to see that, and we're going to have to plan for that. But I have no concerns about the max debt threshold at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom and Julie.
Thanks for your report, Val. I just wanted to clarify the egg credit. I believe that is just on our bonds and not our levies, correct? So, so our, our an agricultural taxpayer in a levy is just paying for one acre or their, their house and one acre of land, but a bond, they're taxed on all of their acreage. So that's why the state.
It's specific to the, to the debt that was, that was shown in the debt service.
And I believe that, so seventy percent is that where the legislators ended up maxing out on the bond? So I thought there was some legislation this year actually to try to increase that for, or for the agricultural taxpayers. So we'll have to see if that comes through, but. So that's just on bonds and not on levies. Yes, thank you.
Amy.
Thanks, Belle, for your presentation. I love how you make it all look so simple with, with how you organize things so well. My question is, do we have any other big projects coming up that would fit in this category that you see? You know, more roofs coming or whatever it would be?
I think on roofs, we're probably okay for right now. I think the next one that we'll probably look at is the high school. So that's really the next big one that we see. So we're starting that facility task force on Thursday, I believe, this week. And so based on the recommendations and where that process goes, that would be our, really, our next big debt service thing that I would see. I'm not anticipating any L T F M bonds in the next couple of years. The middle school is really the big one. And we're intentionally building up fund balance back up so that we don't have to bond, because it's better if we don't have to do that and pay interest. So that, I think the high school is kind of the outlier right now. All of the other buildings have been touched recently and are in pretty good shape. And roof-wise, I think we just did Bridgewater a couple of years ago, the middle school. Spring Creek, I think, was maybe ten years ago when we did that remodel. So just processing in my head, but I think the high school is kind of the next big question. So.
You proactively answered my second question, which was, you know, are we able to build up the fund balance enough to be, stay on top of these things and not have to bond? And it sounds like for the foreseeable future.
That is absolutely the goal for L T F M. Again, that is a restricted source of revenue. So there is a very detailed booklet on what we can and cannot do with those dollars. Roofs are absolutely allowable, and that's a huge cost for the district that would obviously be better to pay straight out instead of paying interest. But, um, but overall, anything that's new square footage or changing the purpose, if we're not just basically updating it the code and standards is, is not technically L T F M eligible. So it's, it's restricted, but we can do quite a bit with it. So. So yes, that is the plan, because it does cover a wide array of things for the district.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Quay.
This ties into Amy's second question. So maybe look at this more generally. So the district, like everyone's benefited from pretty low interest for a number of years now. Federal Reserve is expected to increase rates on Wednesday multiple times this year likely. How does that affect your long-term strategy when it comes to the district?
Um, so because we don't have any, I would say for, for the high school project specifically, anything that we choose to do with that is going to have to likely be a bond where that is voter approved. So timing wise, isn't necessarily under the control of when is the best time. It's when can we do an election that makes sense for the district financially and when does the project make sense to do? So those things will drive some of the timing of that. Not necessarily, we should go now because the interest rates are the best for the district, if that makes sense. We have to make sure all of those other pieces are in place prior to that. Does that make sense? Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comment, question? Do you want to add anything? Top comment?
Sure. Again, I think Belle's given a good, but I, on the interest question, I think this is where our double A plus bond rating helps. So even as the Federal Reserve increases, we still have a chance to get a better interest rate due to that excellent bond rating.
Tom.
And also on the interest rates, we've refinanced several times on many of our projects. So even if we got caught with a high interest rate now, we could always refinance potentially in the future.
Yep, there's several very specific rules, surprise, surprise about that. But Ellers monitors that, that annually to see if we have any opportunities for that, and then we review that with them.
Great. We'll move on, and Belle, you'll be presenting now on the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three Internal Service Fund Budget. Our members of supporting documents are in the table file and will be asked to adopt the budget at the May ninth board meeting.
All right. So I'm glad we started with debt service, because this is the less on budget to present. So the Internal Service Fund, as a reminder, is the fund where we are tracking all of our self-insured health and dental revenue and expenditures and fund balance. So dental was established in two thousand and six, and we went self. Um, and we went self-insured with our health plan in two thousand and twelve, our fiscal year twelve. So I think September of two thousand and eleven was the actual date. Um, effectively, the way this program works is the district is responsible for setting the premiums. So how much does the health plan cost? The district contributes a portion of that. The employees contribute a portion. All of that happens through payroll. And then any retirees that are eligible for their contract to stay on our health plan um after they have retired. There's, some of those have district contribution. Um, some of them pay for it outright. Um, and we have a process for collecting that money from them uh monthly. So all of that revenue goes into the self-insured um pool. And then the expenditures are actual claims for health and dental um that we use Medica um and Delta Dental as our um vendors right now. Every other year, we are required to do a bid process for that. Um, we did just renew with Medica um this past winter. That has, it has actually been probably one of the better processes have going out every two years. Um, HITA is the um law that went into effect. It's the Health Insurance Transparency Act. Um, that has actually been a positive for the district because we were able to go back and kind of get a, a second bid from a vendor to say, hey, we got this quote from someone else. Why didn't you give us a better number? Um, and they typically have. So that's worked well for us. It is a standalone fund. Um, so when I talk about the general fund or um our audit, it is not part of our main financial statement. It is its own separate financial statements. It's considered a proprietary fund. Um, we also have stop-loss insurance on our health insurance, which is a hundred and twenty-five dollars per member per year. Um, and that is insurance, just like um, like it is titled. So we'll talk a little bit about that and how that works. Um, I'll start with the dental first because it is the smaller one. Um, and quite frankly, the one that's operating well. So we're going to talk about that first. We have had super consistent enrollment. I would say it's increased year over year for the most part. Um, since we have had this program in place. We have not raised the premiums since we started this plan in oh six. We actually took a premium holiday for a couple of years where we reduced premiums because the fund balance was to a point where that made sense. Um, this particular program just works really well. Again, there is way less variability um and risk with dental than there is health. And so that makes sense. But I still think um in general, what we've heard from our consultant, we work with One Digital to monthly review um and help us make sure we're in compliance with everything, is that our dental plan works far better than uh what they see in other districts. So we are grateful for that. So the financial summary, the charges for services is the premium revenue. Charges for services is the actual label you would see on the audit report. So I like to try and tie that all together so that if you're looking at a different report, you'll see the same labels and it makes sense. So that is the revenue that the district contributes, our employees contribute, retirees contribute. Um, interest earnings, as you can see, I think, um, we do a, a cash pool interest allocation. So all of the interest comes into the general fund. And then at the end of the year, based on the cash balances of each fund, we allocate that out. Um, and so you can see that was a pretty significant decrease um from twenty to twenty-one. The total sources, um, just over a million dollars. Again, really consistent with enrollment um and the fees being the same from year over year. Insurance claims, we have seen that um tick up a little bit. And I, I talked about this a little bit in my narrative. We saw um a, a, not a huge decline, but definitely a hesitancy towards preventative maintenance and services with the pandemic. Um, so as that has, I've been flowed um in different stages, we've seen different levels of claims and levels of comfort actually going in and um having a service done. And so we are seeing that um kind of tick back as people are getting more comfortable. Things are relaxing. Uh, we're seeing more people go in and get caught up on those services that um, that they should have done. Um, but what um our consultant would tell you, um, their theory and what we are seeing play out a little bit with the health insurance as well is kind of some missed opportunities. And so there's some things that are maybe more expensive now because they didn't have the preventative done during the pandemic. And so we're seeing some of those things that maybe could have gotten caught earlier, but didn't because of um the pandemic. So those things are increasing a little bit. So we are actually in a scenario where we're spending down the fund balance. Um, again, we are well over the fund balance goal. Um, the industry standard that they recommend is forty percent of the claims expenditure. And so I have that calculation there down on the bottom. So for next year, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, six forty-six would be the goal, and we're anticipating to end up four seventeen. So well within the margin there. Um, but just we're aware of that and watching it, but um overall, it's operating very strong. Um, so for the health insurance, we have seen this participation increase. Um, about a four percent increase from last year. Um, it was kind of flat and now it's kind of ticked up again. As you will see, and we have talked about, the premiums went up by twenty-five percent. The insurance advisory committee is the one that reviews all of that data with One Digital and makes that recommendation. Um, and you will see on the coming slides why they made that recommendation. This is a fund where we did not raise premiums for seven years, eight years. Um, we actually reduced premiums for a couple of years because it was doing so well. Um, we had a couple of years where we saw things kind of start to turn, and that has kind of just continued. Um, a lot of times people will talk about the health insurance fund as, you know, once every three years, you're going to have a tough year. It's bound to happen. Um, we have had about four years in a row of tough years now, and um we have access to some analytic data that would suggest it's not going to change in the near future. So we needed to make sure that we were um appropriately matching the revenue to what we see as our expenditure trend. So you can see on here, I added a little bit of extra detail. Um, I'm going to talk about this kind of in twofold, so I'm sorry if this sounds confusing. I'm revising the budget based on some things that happened. Um, again, not asking for approval tonight. Um, that will be at the next board meeting. And the label's wrong on that one. Proposed twenty-two, twenty-three. Sorry about that. That will be with the budget book. Um, probably in May when we do all of the budgets together. So the revised budget, well, I'll talk about as well as the proposed budget for two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three. So in two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, um, I, you'll see I added a line for um prescription rebates. So when we went out and renewed with Medica, one of the things that we changed um was we were paying a lower admin rate. Um, so down on uh the expenditure side, you'll see administrative fees. We were paying a lower admin rate. Um, but Medica got to keep all of the prescription rebates. Um, so we switched that where we're actually getting the rebate. So we get a check quarterly. Um, but then we, we pay a higher administrative fee. Um, so which is a per, um, per member dollar a month that we're paying. And so we've done analysis uh basically each quarter to see how much we've generated in rebates versus how much we paid in additional for the admin fee, and it has actually benefited the district um each quarter so far. So that was about two hundred and forty thousand. Um, in twenty-one, we're anticipating about two hundred and fifty thousand. It's a pretty slow process to get started. Um, we get the rebates almost nine months after the fact. And so it's taken a little while to get it um rolling. But two seventy-five to three fifty is kind of the range that they anticipate. Um, and so I broke that out as a separate line because that really is different than the charges for services line. So I wanted to make sure that was really clear as a change that we had done in the program. So the charges for services, um, the revised budget is really just updating um based on the current enrollment and things like that. So the seven point two million, um, and then showing that the rebates is a separate line item. And then dropping that interest down um based on what we saw actually happen last year. And then we're also increasing the insurance claims um from what was originally budgeted for twenty-one, twenty-two because we've seen such um significant increases. Um, the amount that I had in the adopted budget was not going to be nearly sufficient for what we're probably going to see this year. So eight point two million is the revised budget for that. Um, and then the administrative, administrative fees of about a million. So last year, we ended um with about three point three million um in our fund balance. So you can see we had four point eight. We ended last year at about three point three, which was forty-two percent. So we were just over our fund balance goal. Um, but with the five percent increase in the revised budget, uh, five percent was the increase from the benefits advisory committee for this year. Our expenditures um are continuing at a, at a rate that is surpassing the medical inflation. Um, and so we are anticipating ending with about one point four million dollars or seventeen percent, which is below our fund balance goal. So for twenty-two, twenty-three, you can see that charges for services line goes from seven point two million to nine point five million. That is a twenty-five percent increase in premium. And um as a reminder, I put this in my narrative, but um the district did um authorize an additional million dollars. We had negotiated a five percent increase in our district contribution. Um, but we are in um a strong financial position and are able to do that to help weather some of that um burden off of our staff at this time. That is still going to be an ongoing um conversation about what like, that looks like moving forward. Uh, we'll have that conversation with um One Digital, with the benefits advisory, um, and just see what, what that looks like in the future and how we're going to manage that. And then the rebates is about two hundred and seventy-five thousand is the conservative estimate. Again, like I said, up to three fifty is kind of the range that we've seen on the projections. And then the interest, um, eight point nine million of just claims. And then um just over a million for administrative fees. Again, that's a, a slight increase. Um, it's not crazy. Um, I am anticipating our admin fees to continue to increase because of the way the stop-loss works. Um, and so I think I have a slide on that up here next, but basically we're anticipating ending at about, um, just shy of one in two million or thirteen percent. So definitely the twenty-five percent was needed um to slow that. Um, and we just need to kind of phase in to start getting that revenue in the right direction um to make sure we're keeping pace with those expenditures. Getting confused with my two laptops over here, which buttons I'm clicking. So this is a, a screenshot from um the last monthly report that we received from One Digital. So like I said, we um meet with them monthly. You can kind of see over the past three years, um, the enrollment, claims per member, um, the total claims and how they have increased and what the funding and reserve has done. Um, so in two thousand and nineteen, you'll see we spent down about five hundred and forty-nine thousand. Uh, twenty-twenty kind of broke even, and two thousand and twenty-one was about one point three million dollar um spend down. These numbers are on a calendar year, so don't try to reference them back to my numbers exactly. We do reconcile at the end of the fiscal year. But these will not jive exactly, but basically what you can see is that it is not trending in a direction that we would prefer. Um, and so we just really need to make sure that we're on top of it and moving this fund in the right direction. I also think another thing to note on the enrollment, um, the subscribers has gone up, and so from four sixty-six to four ninety-eight. But the members, um, they like to refer to them as belly buttons. So that includes all of the dependents that are also covered. Has increased at a more substantial rate as well. Um, so there's just more, more people on the plan. Um, but not as many people paying the actual premium, if that makes sense. Oh, I put it in my narrative about the stop-loss. That's why it's not on here. So in your narrative, there is a stop-loss summary um that also kind of highlights the um, the scope in which we've seen these increases. Um, so in two thousand and nineteen, um, again, the, the plan is on a calendar year, which is a little counterintuitive for, for me when I do everything else on a fiscal year basis, but we had, um, so our stop-loss is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and we track a report that shows how many people have exceeded fifty percent of stop-loss or sixty-two thousand, five hundred. So in two thousand and nineteen, that was eighteen people. The total of their claims was two point one million dollars. And the total that went over the one twenty-five totaled about three hundred and seven thousand dollars. Um, so then the plan ended up paying basically the difference or the one point eight. Um, of those eighteen people, it was tw- almost twenty-six percent of the total claims. And so if you walk across that, you can see in two thousand and twenty, it was twenty-three people and three million dollars, um, nine hundred thousand dollars of stop-loss. Um, and the plan paid two point two and thirty, almost thirty-four percent of our total claims from twenty-three people. And then the same story for um this past year, we had twenty-four people, um, almost the same total claims. Um, a little bit less for stop-loss at seven thirty-one. And the plan paid about two and a half million, and it was thirty-two percent. And so when you have thirty-two percent of your claims from twenty-four people, that is very difficult to change. Um, there are clearly some significant things happening with those individuals, um, which, again, we're grateful that they have insurance and can get the care that they need, but that is the current reality for this plan. Um, and so we need to make sure that we're just aware of that, matching our revenue to make sure that we are um bringing back that fund balance to the level that is um, that we have deemed minimal, which is that forty percent. And so we'll work on building that over the next couple of years. Um, but that's kind of the story with this one. Um, not my typical easygoing budget presentation, but um that is the reality of the situation. Um, and so I just wanted to spend a little extra time, especially since you just got that in your packet, and that's a lot of information. Um, but I'm happy to take any questions that you have, and there's, this won't be asked for approval until um probably in May. So we've got time if you have more questions um as you look at it, so.
Okay, thank you, Val.
Yep.
Any questions? Amy?
Again, thanks for the presentation, Val. I have two questions for you. The first is, uh, and your answer may end up being anecdotal or what you've heard from the insurance companies, but what is your sense of um how the pandemic has affected claims, whether people are making more claims or delaying healthcare? Or what, what, how will that affect us both in the past and looking forward, do you think?
Um, so I will be mostly anecdotal, uh, as you guessed, um, because it's hard to know. The, the data is aggregate and we aren't allowed to see anything um specific by member for HIPAA reasons, obviously. So what um, what I will say is similar to the comment that I made in the dental. Um, we do have some concerns in the data that we're seeing. Um, we are, we do have um an analytic tool. I don't remember the name of it um off the top of my head, that shows kind of payments and the different types of things that they have and the ones that they are projecting to be more expensive um in the coming year and that sort of thing. And we are seeing some more cancer-type things come up that uh were likely missed early on um during the pandemic when people would not go to the doctor, couldn't go to the doctor because of, you know, it being shut down and those sorts of things. So we do have some concerns about just healthcare issues that are maybe worse now than they could have been um and treating that. Um, in addition to that, I think um healthcare in general is in a position where they were dramatically impacted um and ensuring their budgets are making sense and matching revenue and expenditures. And so when they were shut down or only seeing certain services, um, I think that impacted their budgets. And so we are anticipating their rates in general to, just healthcare rates in general to increase as well. Um, so all things leading to a not ideal scenario with our actual claim data being um just not on a good trajectory as well as kind of some other things that we think are likely to happen. And just inflation in general that we're seeing now is going to impact that as well. So basically all bad news is where I'm at.
Yeah, I was worried you were going to say that. All right. My second question might be a little easier. Yeah, I was worried you were going to say that. All right. My second question might be a little easier. Could you explain the RX rebates, why they exist? And why, yeah, just what they are and how, why we're getting them and whatever you can tell me about them.
So this is probably one of my least favorite parts of the healthcare program. Because effectively what happens is we have Medica. And Medica has a contract with a third party therapeutics. And so whatever drugs they authorize and have contracts for are the ones that we get better discounts on. And so if we have a member that goes and gets X prescription and it's on the list, it costs less than, you know, a different one. So they have all kinds of basically behind the scenes arrangements, as I understand it. I will not pretend to be an expert in this area, but the conversations that we've had with our consultant is that basically Medica gets, was getting all of those kickbacks essentially is, I'm going to call it a kickback. Probably not the technical term, but that's how it feels and operates. So we have a contract with Adderall or whatever drug it is, and anybody that uses that, they get a percentage of the revenue. So instead of Medica getting those, we are getting that now. So the revenue comes directly to us from Medica still, like they're facilitating everything, but we get the revenue for it. But then we pay in a higher admin rate. So we're already paying, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but six, you know, six dollars and seventy five cents per subscriber, so per belly button. So we're paying now eight dollars or something per subscriber, but then we get this revenue offset. And so when we compare the amount of revenue we're bringing in actually is more than the additional admin expense that we're paying. So effectively, Medica was you know, making some money on that program from us. And now we're making, making the money. It's helping the program not be as terrible.
I get that, but I doubt the program covers one hundred percent of the prescription costs. And so the original money is being paid by our members and then we're just getting a slice of that pie. So.
It's, like I said, it's probably my least favorite part of of the whole program because it, I think the pharmaceutical companies can do whatever they choose to do.
Thank you.
Now, I just want you to clarify, to be extremely clear, the list of these RX medications that you're talking about in which a discount is provided and that rebate then given back to the district. Medica, the partner, is the sole group that has the ability to determine what is on that list. The district has no input, no ability to say what is on the list of approved medications for those that get the discount. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I've
Do you want to ask something?
You go first, Noel, and then I'll.
Thank you for your clarity in this report and for the work that you do in all of the reports. A real plus to this board member and I think to the community too. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to do a little summary. I think it's really important to take a little trip down memory lane. This is a program that was highlighted by the University of Minnesota's Humphrey Institute for Public Affairs as an innovation for governmental agencies. And I also want to take out the point to the time to point out the power of fund balance. So in the next budget item, we're going to talk about budget prioritization. But I want you to take a look at the health financial summary slide. And we, in two thousand nineteen, twenty, not too long ago, we were at almost a seventy percent fund balance with the goal being forty percent. And that goal has been set by our consultant because we know that healthcare costs can be unpredictable. Right? As you heard, thirty two percent of all of our, so one third of our costs coming from twenty four people. And you saw the number of subscribers that we have or the number of employees who take it. So that's the way this works is that there can be some real unpredictability with this. So carrying that forty percent fund balance, I've been involved in those in the years past, I've been involved in the benefits advisory community. I no longer am because Val and Molly handle it so well. But the fact is there were many times that we looked at how much longer can we maintain a fund balance above the forty percent goal? And we've always made some changes, right? There's been some changes to some of the benefits that our employees get, et cetera. But you can see when you, when you start to spend fund balance, it can go in a hurry. And so thank goodness we had that, right? Because we were able to intervene and soften the fall, if you will, into what many other organizations have lived with for years, which is this unpredictability and healthcare costs. So I want to point out that this is a program that is still something that we're very proud of. We have been able over time to really mitigate the costs for families and people in the district. However, that is gone. And we also need to point to how powerful fund balance is. And fund balance is very easily spent, but very difficult to replenish. And so I just, I think this is a good cautionary tale. As you know, we used fund balance as a tool here to soften the impact on employees for several years. That's a good thing. It cannot be done forever. So I'm using this to foreshadow our next discussion here about how good it is to have fund balance. The impact that good financial management and a strong fund balance can have on real people like our employees to not have had a significant increase for so many years. And that when we use it judiciously, it can be very powerful, but it can also go very quickly. So we are confident that we're able to weather this particular storm and restore us back to, we won't be at a sixty nine percent fund balance. Again, I don't see that in the next decade. However, the fact is we will get back to forty percent and that's a very solid fund balance for a program like this. So it is complex. Val and Molly Visselman is our benefits expert. I'm not sure there's anybody who knows more as a school person about health benefits than Molly. So we have the right people in place to help us get through this. So thanks, Val, for the presentation. I just wanted to kind of wrap it up with that discussion about fund balance.
Thank you so much. Okay, our next item is the budget prioritization process presented by Dr. Hillman. And I'm not sure, Val, you're also going to be a part of that.
She's going to help with the discussion, yes. So I did not put the budget prioritization schedule in your packet because you had it for the last couple of times. So I just want to go back to the reasons that we're doing a budget prioritization process very briefly. Then we'll talk about what we've done so far, what we're going to do, and then what the board can expect from there. So as we have said, you know, we have routinely been we have routinely been validated about the district's financial management and that we have managed the finance as well. The double A plus bond rating by Standard and Poor's is the latest validation of the work that we have done. You've heard those reports. You know that they are very sophisticated and looking at how the district manages its finances and that we've routinely been validated for the financial management strategies that we've used. But we also know that we're running into two main issues and a portion of one of those issues I'll highlight again. So we just cannot start a discussion in Minnesota about school funding without talking about thirty years of chronic underfunding. And so over the last thirty years, we can count on one hand how many times school districts have gotten an inflation, an increase to the per pupil basic formula that has matched inflation. The most recent session, we're very grateful for the legislature's investment in public education. But even the historic two point four five percent increase to the per pupil basic formula is going to be lucky if it can hit a third of what inflation is this year. I recently wrote in the Northfield News that inflation was above six percent and someone pointed out to me that I had undersold it then. That's what it was at the time, but I understand we're just under eight percent now in the latest calculation. So the fact is that we had many, many years of being below inflation. Now we've seen some of the highest inflation that we've seen since the nineteen eighties. Two point four five percent is not going to get it done and not even close. So we're fighting thirty years of chronic underfunding. And then, of course, you heard and the community heard the presentation from Hazel Reinhardt about where we're going with our demographic study. And we are going to be going down by around four hundred students over the next ten years. There is no school district in the state or the country that can weather as well as we have thirty years of chronic underfunding and declining enrollment. So we've heard a lot lately about the full funding of public education. And I'm going to take this opportunity to talk about that for a moment. It's hard to give people a specific number about what is full funding of public education in Minnesota mean. It's a difficult number to come to down to a penny. But I can tell you what it costs to fully fund the special education cross subsidy that is seven hundred and eighty one million dollars across the entire state. So part of that chronic underfunding and part of the budget challenge that we have that has prompted a prioritization process is that we are spending five million dollars of general fund money each year on what I would consider to be morally imperative students for services for students with disabilities for which we do not get reimbursed. These are required and morally imperative services without reimbursement. So any company that has ten percent, nearly ten percent of its expenditures that is required to be spent on one area is of course going to have to adjust their budget in other areas. It just stands to reason. But I would strongly encourage the legislature, if we can't agree on what does fully funding public education mean? I can live with that. Reasonable people can disagree on that. But I'd know what it would take to fully fund the special education cross subsidy in the state. That's seven hundred and eighty one million dollars. And the legislature has more than ten times that amount of money right now in a budget surplus. So it is not feasible anymore to say that we don't have the money. We have the money. We're choosing not to use it. So because of the lack of that will, we are bringing sixty people together over four meetings to adjust a budget that we have worked hard and been validated on how we have managed over the years. You hear a little bit of passion in my voice because this deserves to be passionate. So we have sixty members of the community coming together. They come from administration. They come from staff. They come from students, some of whom might be in this room, listening to these very difficult discussions, community members, parents or are coming together to review our budget and to prioritize how we want to spend the money that we are able to while also meeting our fiscal goals. This is a different process and it's a little bit messy. And it's a little frustrating. And we are okay with that. Because we are asking people to tell us what are the programs and services that they think give us the best chance to achieve the vision, the commitments and the benchmarks that you have adopted as our strategic plan. As I've shared before, I could cut the budget in ninety minutes. If you're to tell me right now, Matt, go cut the budget, Val and I would walk upstairs. You could sit out for pizza. We'd come back down with a spreadsheet and a red pen and we will have cut the budget. And it'd be done. And there would be nobody who'd be happy about it. There are other in between methods that you can do, but bringing the community together to ask what do you want versus what don't you want is a little bit messier. Now, we started this process from a position of financial strength. We have reserved about two million dollars of our COVID relief funds. And we have a strong fund balance that allows us to be diligent and thoughtful in these conversations about what programs and services will help us meet our goals versus saying what programs and services, forgive me, do we want to vote off the island? So we did a survey after our second meeting. We've had two meetings so far. We did a survey after our second meeting. We had seventeen of around the sixty people provide feedback. We're getting positive validation around a lot of the process. There is some discomfort where we're at right now in terms of because people expect to cut. And we're saying, yep, that's fine, but we want to talk about what do you want to prioritize? So that's what the first two means. The first being was really Val and I providing information for people about the, about the why, about what the budget is at, where we're going and the task at hand. We had a little bit of time for our breakout groups. There are three groups that are meeting. There's one group that is solely looking at the district services budget. There's one group that is solely looking at the elementary budget. And there's one group that's solely looking at the middle school, high school area learning center budgets. And so we have given far more detail than any other budget process that we've given, which we have learned is both good and not so good, right? Because you can always, there can always be one more layer of detail. But sometimes one more layer of detail might cloud the situation. So we're learning because we do think this is a process that we're going to use regularly for maintenance. Again, we want the money that we spend to totally align or as closely as we can to align with our strategic plan. If someone looks and pulls apart our budget, we want them to find that your funding, the things that you have said are important in our strategic plan. So the first being was really about that overview, some small breakout. The second meeting was in our breakout groups. And very typical, normal, there was still a lot of education happening through questioning, asking what's this, what's this part of the budget mean? What does this do? So we debriefed today and we have a plan for how we're going to help the teams tomorrow night start that process of prioritization. We're going to do things like give them sentence starters. We want to prioritize X because this impact, this will be the impact on the strategic plan. And we're going to try to get people out of the counting dollars part. That's not really the, that's an important part for this group to hear. But once we get that list of general prioritizations in our typical bubble to the top kind of mode, then our finance office will do the calculation of, okay, here's where we're at. If we were to use the current priorities that you have, here are the programs that we would then most likely eliminate or reduce. So the prioritization team doesn't have to come up with a specific number, right? They're going to give us the programs. We'll do the financial calculations in the background. They will come to consensus that that is what their priorities are. Then the administrative team's responsibility is to formulate the budget plan that aligns with that. So we will take all of those items. We will create basically the list of reductions, right? The things that aren't prioritized. And that's what we will bring to you. We are still finalizing. There's one portion in the middle that we're looking at of ideating how we are able to provide the public another opportunity to provide their feedback. As you know, we've been educating the public for months on this. Whether it be through our parent updates, whether it be through Val and I's presentation at K Y M N Radio, been working with the Northfield News. They'll be doing an article this week as well. We've provided a lot of information. We've invited a lot of people to participate. Anyone who had applied to participate was invited to participate. And in fact, we even reached out to some more people to help us. So that next meeting is really about getting those priorities in order. And then the final meeting, which is going to be on or around March twenty fourth, we have some late conflicts that we need to work through there. But that will get us the kind of the, as polished as it can get. Then the administrative team will operationalize it, if you will. And then, as I said, we're still ideating, just we think we want to have one more opportunity for the public to be able to weigh in on it before we ask you to do any kind of formal vote. So I can anticipate you hearing the budget plan at one meeting, then some kind of public event for people to be able to share with the board what their perspectives are on the prioritization. And then a final vote on where we do to move forward. We're verifying all of the timelines. As we've also said before, eighty percent of every budget in schools across Minnesota are salary and benefits because we hire people to do good things for kids. You cannot make adjustments like this without reducing positions, not can be done. And so we certainly love creative ideas, but there's just no way, we're not, let's just put it, we're not going to find the money in the couch cushions to get us to where we need to go, if that makes sense. So that is my overview of the situation. I'll have Val weigh in on her perspective.
I think that you comprehensively covered it. It's been really interesting from my perspective as somebody who likes to have things in a certain way and watching the process unfold and it is messy, as Dr. Hillman said. It's actually been really good for me to see, see that conversation and kind of see where, where it's taking people. I think the result is going to be really positive for the district's future.
So that's the update. We told you we'd update you at each board meeting and we, I'm sorry, I know that you have all heard the pieces at the beginning about the why and those things, but I think it's important. We start every discussion with that because new people come to this discussion at different points that we need to ground them in what the reality is. So I thank you for your patience as I walk through those initial items.
Thank you so much, board members. Jeff.
What was the last year we went through this before?
Two thousand and eleven.
Two thousand and eleven, and I was here in two thousand and eleven. I think it's a very fair process and it, I mean, it works well and implemented. So I think, you know, I look forward, obviously, we don't necessarily want to be doing cuts, but I think it's a very fair process and it's a good thing to work through.
Anyone else comment? Amy?
Well, first I want to thank you for your approach to this whole process because it seems like you're getting a lot of good inputs. And I also agree that special education is a morally imperative thing to fund. But I feel like I need to ask a delicate question. And that is, I know we're just partway through the process, but you see the special education students being equally impacted by the cuts as the general education students.
Yeah, that's a great question. So the first thing is that we need to remember that all students, special, all special education students are first and foremost general education students who happen to receive special accommodations due to a disability. So by that very definition, the general education cuts affect the special education students in a commensurate way. So by that very definition, the general education cuts uh affect the special education students in a commensurate way. That we also then they'll have to, the second part to that answer is that there are, those services uh to students with disabilities are federally protected. In a number of different ways. There's a law that we've talked with you before about maintenance of effort, which means you have to spend at least what you spent. On special education services in the previous fiscal year plus one penny. And you can spend less, but there are only four reasons that you can do so. And I'm not going to be able to enumerate them all. But the gist of it is if you lost, let's say that you had a cohort of students that had a, a number of, a, a graduating class that had a number of students with severe disabilities. And so because they graduated, the cost went down. That would be an acceptable reason. Another reason will be if you had several retirements. Uh, and you replace those personnel with people who are lower on the salary schedule. Just simply that that would be, that's an appropriate piece. There's a couple of other technical pieces around maintenance of effort. But those uh services are generally protected. Now, it's not completely perfect, right? But that's the. That's the short answer to a very complex question. But to, to sum it up. I think that it's important to remember that special education students first and foremost are general education students. And so. The similar, those, those reductions do affect special education students in a similar way to general education students. When it comes to their general education. There's also components of their services that we are required to provide under law. That cannot be reduced unless uh it is determined by that IEP team uh to be able to reduce those. And so it, it, special education students from that perspective within their disabilities. Um, you will not see the same kinds of reductions there as you would in a, a general education classroom.
Okay, I thank you for the detailed explanations. The answer is sort of.
As usual, the answer is it depends.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Question, comment?
I just appreciate all the effort that you have, you know, the, the process as, as Amy articulated so well in terms of how we approach this and. Certainly we have to thank the 60 people who are choosing to step up and do this hard work and it's uh, you know, our, our team of administrators too. So. We are looking forward to, to hearing about, you know, the outcomes, but the process seems really sound and I really appreciate that we're taking a. Innovative approach to this, to this complex problem.
Anyone else?
I'm also very grateful that we're um attending to such a serious issue before um it's a huge crisis. It's.
As we have been saying, we are acting on this out of a, with a sense of urgency. But not an emergency, if that makes sense. So we are being urgent so we can avoid an emergency.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is um hearing your update on district operations and local county COVID-19 data.
Yes, uh again, um these reports are feeling better and better, uh which is a great thing. Uh, so I just want to share with you a few items I gave you in the uh packet. The latest, uh the one that I had, the latest uh COVID uh tests or positive tests over a week to week period. So you'll see the situation in Rice County. We'll start with that. Uh, I do want to point out that after I uh published this particular document, the new chart came out. And the weekly count for the following week, which would have been uh through March 5th. Showed 109 cases in the county. So we had gone from 89 the week of the 13th through the 19th. Down to 44, following in the right direction and then went back up to 109. And so that has prompted under the CDC's new um assessment procedures that Rice County is in what they consider to be the high range. Now, um, we have a separate set of protocol that we're using for determining any kind of safety. Feet uh measures at our school buildings. Uh, what I can tell you is looking at the first day back after spring break, all of our buildings are around 1% or less. In terms of the students who are absent today because of the ILI rate. So that's a good thing. And then I have confirmed that with public health, that the vast majority of those 109 cases in the last reporting period. Um, I'm going to frame it as they took place at congregate living settings uh. They took place at congregate living settings in our community. Uh, so they are um larger institutions, if you will. And so the good news is, is we've looked at that, those are contained. And so we have not seen spread beyond that. So that's a good piece that, that public health has confirmed that. So. Really uh a wonderful morning that I had today to update the dashboard. The total number of active cases when we started the day today was nine in the district. That means there were not only nine new cases. Reported in the last 14 days and considering in the month of January, reported over 600 new cases. This is a very welcome change. Now, we did my initial analysis of the spreadsheets just before coming to the board meeting. It does look like we're going to add. Three cases tomorrow. Uh, I will be straight up that that is far less than what I had anticipated. We might add today. Every weekend, coming out of every weekend, there's usually a little bit of a catch up on the dashboard because of people who went and got tested over the weekend. And I fully expected coming out of spring break, I didn't expect a ton more, but only having three new cases reported um on, on Monday. Um, is far less than what I had anticipated without having had people report for over a week. So we really are uh going in the right direction. So just, you know, even when I published this packet on uh Wednesday night. We were at 15 cases and now we're at nine, right? In the active range. And so the rate of growth has really slowed to a trickle, which is excellent. We also know that this uh virus can be something that we don't want to necessarily try to predict. So we stand ready to respond should we see some kind of new issue arise. Uh, but the good news is uh that overall it's been excellent and we are going in the right direction. So. That is a uh, a wonderful thing to report. Um, I do have a bright spot and then there are two items that I'm just going to um add to my report ad hoc. Um, the first is I just am so thrilled to share with you that our own Cheryl Hall. Uh Director of Special Services was named the Minnesota Administrators of Special Education Organizations Director of the Year. And um Cheryl is an amazing professional, total altruism. And I will not ever forget the day in August of 2020. Well, it would have been July of 2020 when I went into Cheryl's office and said, hey Cheryl. Um, we need a COVID-19 coordinator and I think you are it because she supervises the health services portion. And Cheryl said, oh, of course I can do that. And there wasn't a, um, one bit of hesitation. Little did she know it would be really equally a full-time job. So she's really been doing full-time, a full, two full-time jobs for two years. And there was a moment when we were really having some tough times where we talked about, did we need to maybe look elsewhere and, and you know, in terms of, do we need to have something different to support her? And on, I will take this for the rest of my career, which is she said, you know, I'm, she said, no, we, we can do this. And it's not that it's not hard right now, but I'm really happy that I get to serve my community in this way during this time. And altruism, in my opinion, is something that has been lost. There are just, there are so few people that you see who truly act altruistically. More and Cheryl Hall is absolutely at the top of the list. She uh did a great scheduling job and was on vacation uh out of state when they would have awarded her this honor at the Mace, uh the M A S A. Mace Conference last Wednesday or Thursday and Friday. I happened to be there. Um, of course I was there and it was just really wonderful to hear Mace. Talk about Cheryl, not just the impact that she's made here, but she's been the president of that organization. She's been on numerous committees. Cheryl hasn't just made a difference for Northfield. She's made a difference for special education students across the state. So I know that we all understand that Cheryl is a treasure and we mean that in every sense of the word. Um, and I just hope that you will reach out to her and congra, I know some of you have already done so, but she'll officially be awarded with the honor. Uh, in May during their leadership conference. So they did recognize her at the conference last week. Um, but again, congratulations to Cheryl, just so deserving of that award and uh has just. Done an incredible job both from managing a special education program. That changed the rules and made everybody have a meeting by December of 2022. A lot of people, 2021, a lot of people complaining about that. Cheryl didn't complain. She just found a way to get it done, right? Let's figure out, how can we do this? And again, still being one of the key advisors on our COVID-19 team. So congratulations to Cheryl. I'm so thrilled that she was honored. There's no one more deserving in my humble but deadly accurate opinion. Uh, two other items that I want to share is that one, as you know, uh, we have reconstituted the Legislative Action Committee. And uh Cory, um Claudia and Julie are the board members on that committee. Last year. Um, the three of us and, or the three of them and I met weekly. Uh, we attended all of the legislative lobbying days. Uh, for things like Schools for Equity and Education. We've done some other uh work with our legislators. And then the goal of that group was to add more people, to activate more people in the community, to pay attention to the legislative action. And to make sure that we helped teach people how to get engaged in the process. So starting in January, we had a, uh, an introductory meeting. I would say that we have 12 to 15 people who are regularly showing up for a Zoom meeting every other Saturday. We're training them about the different parts of education, finance and education policy. We're teaching them about the legislative process and how um, how Minnesota's legislature handles bills, how they hear bills. How they bring to them to the floor, how something gets into the omnibus bill, how things might not go, that was my timer to say I'm done. I've got a seven minute timer. So we got just a couple more minutes here. Yep. Forgot to turn the volume off. That's, yeah, it was, I should have had the one minute, man. I'm doing this to try to. So uh, we've had the Legislative Action Committee moving for a couple of months now. We've had very good feedback. We had a dozen people turn out to our Schools for Equity uh virtual visit. And uh, the, our Schools for Equity and Education um Coordinator Deb Griffiths, just. 12 people from Northfield came to that. That's pretty impressive. And so really Northfield shows up. So. We just wanted to update you on that. We're really working on the special education cross subsidy. And of course on equalization, there's a couple of equalization bills that if it went through, it'd save us a couple, two and a half million dollars or so. It wouldn't save us. It would save our taxpayers. Uh, a little bit more than two and a half million dollars. So we're continuing to work on that and they've got that in the taxes bill, which is really important. So it won't, won't come out of the education target. So I just want to give you a brief update. At the next meeting, we'll give you more full update about the Legislative Action Committee, but we're really thrilled with it. So. Um, I want, if Cory or Claudia or Julie want to say anything about that, they can go ahead and do so right now. And then I just have one more very short item to share.
Just that there's also an opportunity for board members to attend a um virtual day at the Capitol.
On March 24th.
Right. And so if any of you are interested in that, you need to let us know because you have to register through the district office.
Well, there's a component that's this Thursday, the 17th that requires registration. I think the 24th is the one-on-one meetings with legislators. So that's a different uh outlet. So follow up if you want to register for this week, correct?
So this week, this week, Thursday, the 17th, it's around one o'clock. MSBA is just doing a really essentially a training session for board members. Around legislative action. So um, if you check your MSBA, uh, you all get email from MSB, the MSBA. Take a look, they sent something out with, something was sent late last week. Take a look. If you have an interest in um registering for that, we can certainly get you registered tomorrow.
Now, I was just going to add for the clarification, the CP's where we had dozen people show up. That was to speak with Senator Dreheim. So that was a 20-minute conversation about. And then later that day, we had about six or seven people come together to speak with Senator Duckworth from Lakeville and Representative Garofalo from Farmington who. Represented Northern little sliver of the district. Just want to clarify that because we often forget about the other two representatives though.
Okay. And then just the final item I wanted to share, I, I highlighted a couple of months back that we, Northfield Public Schools was selected by the Minnesota Department of Education for. Uh, a substantial Grow Your Own Grant that is specifically to try to target helping increase the number of teachers of color in our district. And so we have partnered with HCI, Zach, Prue and H C R are helping us with that process. Um, we have had what's called the Northfield Teaching Fellows Council meeting over the last month, developing the application. We anticipate we're going to be able to support about 17 people of color to become teachers over the next four years. So it's a, a really innovative approach using what's called last dollar tuition. So we help um folks apply for all the uh financial aid that they can get and then they can get up to a $2,500 tuition assistance. There's a thousand dollar stipend to help for things like transportation. And childcare. Um, we've got about a dozen people on that group too that are coming together. They've met three times now. This afternoon. Uh, we finalized the application process and we anticipate launching that program and the application this week. So I'll bring more information. About that back to you, but uh this is the, I, the thing from ideation to actual things happening. And so we're excited to make that part uh, that progress. And I think it's important for you to know that. So that is my report for this evening. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Terrific. Any questions or comments? Great.
Dr. Hillman, quick question about the COVID case count. Obviously you're requesting families before spring break to. Test before coming back. Obviously we have no idea who did or didn't and hopefully the numbers stay low. My question is today at the district testing site, was there much activity for those who maybe didn't have access to a test over the weekend?
Cory, I did not get the report today um from, but I will get that tomorrow and I can update board members as to how many people we had participate today. I can. I can actually probably look it up fairly quickly. Um, I do not, I, I do not anticipate that we had a lot of participation today. And I, I think that's a good, I just do want to highlight too that I shared that we did, starting last Monday, a week from a week ago today. Uh, we did move the N C E C, uh, the Northfield Community Education Center to have their protocols aligned with the rest of the districts. That was the final area. Uh, that we were still waiting um on the masking piece. Now, again, Northfield Public Schools, any district building masking is recommended, but optional. Along with the other safety protocols as well.
Anyone else comment or question? We're moving on to consent agenda. Thank you, Dr. Hillman. Um, we will now move on to the approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Move by Amy, second. Like Cory. Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right. We are on item seven, items for individual action. We have one item to take action on tonight, the bid approval for the high school office remodel. The office will be remodeled this summer if approved and funded by the long-term facilities maintenance revenue. Included in the 10-year plan adopted by our board February 28th of this year. I'll take a motion and then discussion. Is there a motion to approve? The high school office remodels, winning bids and costs associated with permits and fees for $1,86,641 as presented. Moved by Tom, second. Your second, Amy. Okay, we'll have some discussion and um Val and Dr. Hillman.
And Cole Nelson. We'll have Cole come up to the podium.
They can.
Maybe we should, Cole and Val can just share a little bit about the bid process.
Okay. Yep, you can kick it out.
Okay. Um, so yeah, last Tuesday, we received bids um here at the district office. Um, we did have competitive bids for basically all of the bid packages. There were a few that we only received one bid on, but we did have coverage on all the bid packages. Um, as you can see in the numbers, they did come in a little higher than the original budget um with the, with the market, everything as volatile as it is. It's kind of hard to predict um from when we got the last budget, but um we were good to receive uh numbers on it all. Um, and as Dr. Hillman had. Uh, stated, we are asking for approval on it um just based on that exact thing of the volatility of the market and procuring the materials. Um, for the summer, we, we've done a few things to try to minimize that risk. Um, but that, that's pretty much.
I think I would just like to add um. Just for scope of how um, how volatile it is. When we originally started this conversation, we had a rough estimate um of about 466,000. In September. And then in January, the estimate was 965,000 and the actual bits in March came in over a million. So. That's how quickly we're seeing this um impact things across the district. Kind of to the, to some of the questions that I received earlier. Um, we, we do need to plan for it, but I thought that was an interesting. Comparison from September to March. Uh, so nine months it, well, more than doubled. So.
And one piece, the biggest ones that we did see the increases on were the um. Uh, plumbing and then the electrical bids were the two that kind of were the outliers compared to the original budget. Um, and I think that is again, kind of due to the, the material procurement of, of those things or those areas. So.
Okay, thank you so much. Any question?
Hi Cole, glad you're here. I have two questions. Um, the first, you may not know the answer to, but I just thought the building permit cost of $8,500. Just seemed really high to me. Do you have any sense why that's so high?
Um, no, I'm not sure why, what the, the, the formula is that the city charges. Um, this is the first project I've done in Northfield officially. So I'm not sure that their formula, but they are, is pretty typical, I would say. Um, permit cost being, being a fair chunk of change. So.
Okay. Uh, and my second question is um, just sort of a general one, when we go through the bidding process. Um, how do we account for minority and female owned contractors or does that considered in any way? Do we favor them in any way?
Um, we don't necessarily favor them on bid day due to the bid laws, but we do reach out. Knutson does have a hold the. We don't necessarily favor them on bid day due to the bid laws, but we do reach out. Knutson does have a whole division that does promote the business I worked with this past in Rochester. They do have a whole division that promotes female owned and operated businesses. And they try to help them get in contact with these bids when these bids are out and available for bids. So that's kind of how they help on that sense. We don't follow any requirements per se on on that, but they that's how we try to help with that. So.
Do you have the sense that any of these contractors are either minority or female owned?
Um, I would have to do a little more research on that, to be honest with you. I haven't worked with all of the contractors that we that we have on on the list. To be fair to that, I would have to double check, which I can definitely do.
Okay, I'm just curious. It'd be nice just to sort of make sure we're including them in the process. And it sounds like we are at some level, but I want to just continue to encourage that as we move forward.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Great question. You wanna Jeff?
Thanks for all your work on these projects. Over the years, we've been, I think, quite successful at including local contractors in bids and and those types of things. I know there's tons of laws and things to follow. You know, and you have to use obviously qualified people, but can you comment on how we can, I mean, I'm sure they would either could either be with the general, the contractors or whatever else. So I mean, our, I mean, that's been a real staple over the years in Northfield that we do try to use local people that are paying taxes here, living here and doing that. So your comments on that?
Yeah, no, I think that that's important and it helps, you know, even in the construction, most times it's their availability and they can relate to the buildings and the whereabouts of the building. So I think we definitely try to, I would say, you know, again, with the volatility of these markets from the feedback I've heard on, you know, this isn't a, we didn't have a huge outing for bids on all the packages by any means. And I think there's has some hesitation in the bidding world just with materials and being able to get them in the bidding. So I think this one's a little bit of an off, but I definitely think encouraging that is is great. And I think there was two of them in in this within a thirty mile radius.
And I think I would say that the the answer to the last two questions is fairly similar. I think one of the things that Knutson does really well is reaches out to those networks of companies that are owned by traditionally underrepresented sectors of our community. And then also making sure that local vendors also know about it. What we've learned is that so often all of those kinds of businesses just aren't always aware, right, of all of the different things in the marketplace. So when we did the work with Knutson for the Greenville Park project and the projects at Spring Creek, et cetera, one of the things we were so impressed with, what Knutson had done is they had actually hosted a pre-bid, where they do pre-bid walkthroughs. They actually had a couple of pre-bid conferences where they specifically reached out to the kinds of organizations where these questions, the last two questions have come from, to try to make sure that people were aware that they could come and get their questions answered. So I think that that's one of the things that our partners at Knutson Construction Management do very well. And they have a number of different networks that they get the bids out through. And then they host a number of things. We didn't, I don't believe we hosted a construction.
Did a pre-bid for the.
We did a, we did the pre-bid walkthrough, but not the bigger conference, I don't think. Yeah. And that's on a big building project, you do the pre-bid. We always do the pre the pre-bid walkthrough so that we can answer any questions. People can have confidence in what they're bidding. So it's one of the real advantages of having a construction management firm.
I was just thinking it might be nice to just compile a list of local contractors and maybe some underrepresented contractors and have them available for future for information purposes to send them the bidding documents and just because I don't know whether Knutson knows all of our local contractors. So it'd be nice to help with that process.
Yep, for sure.
Jeff?
One quick question. It's kind of insane where these construction prices are going. When we look at it, that you know, the middle school roof and where that started. And sorry, are you, for clarification, are you saying that this bid started out in this last January of four sixty-six or was that a year ago?
In September of twenty-one.
September.
That was the estimate we had.
September of twenty-one, four sixty-six, and now to one point eight million, one point eight six.
January would have been.
Just over a million.
No, not one point eight. Let's be, let's make sure we have the.
One million eighty-six.
A one million, one, one million.
That's a big difference. Yeah.
So so it's still from four six six to almost doubled, almost doubled. So you see, I know you don't have a crystal ball and you don't have everybody in the industry calling you. I mean, is this a spike? And you you see anything with the construction business? Because I know you, the bigger contractors get in and it's a tough deal. You see that, you know, coming in in a wave or is that going to be an adjustment, hopefully coming down, I would hope, or, you know, hard to predict?
Yeah, it's it's one of those things that's very hard to predict. I did talk with the estimator at Knutson and they're they're working through that when they're doing these budgets. Because again, you know, the one, you know, here from January, it came in at nine sixty-five. That wasn't very long ago and they're usually very accurate with their estimates. So they're trying to work through how to, you know, what to put in there for the those inflationary costs. And and at this point, you know, again, talking to other contractors, there's just so much volatility with with the materials that they just aren't sure what to kind of predict with that. A lot of it is material driven. More so than any labor force or anything. I mean, there is some of that going on, but it's more so the material driven for that. So.
I'm sure you hear enough supply issue, issues, chain issues and just, there's a lot of crazy stuff going on. So hopefully we can get more into stable markets in the future, but keep our fingers crossed and thanks for all your work. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions?
Sidebar to this issue. I believe the contractors have a trade magazine that comes out, publication that regularly identifies projects for them to bid on. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's a name escaping me, but there are postings online there. There's, yeah.
It's a centralized database.
It's a database of all the projects and there's multiple of those based on the region.
Pretty much based all in, it it covers all of Minnesota.
Yep, yep, there's multiple that that cover Minnesota. That it's very well known, Plan Room is what it was.
The contractors have access. They don't have to look in the line ads. They have access to the projects that are available.
Yep, absolutely. We have the legal ads that are posted in the paper and then along with that, we do the Plan Room posting on there. And then Knutson also does reach out to, you know, their database of contractors that they have worked with or worked with in the past and in this situation worked with for the Greenville project and the other ones that were completed.
Thank you.
Yeah, so.
Any other questions or comments, Julie?
So I just wanted to ask about the project itself. It it will start this summer. How long do you anticipate the the project taking from? You know, if if everything's on schedule is Knutson, we know is very good at doing, but what what do you see the timeline for completion?
Yep, so we'll be starting just as soon as school's out. So right away, beginning of June, I think it's June thirteenth is the official start date. And then we'll be wrapping up there, beginning of August, I believe it's the eleventh. Somewhere in there. So you'll have time for the staff and admin to move back in since that is their space and they're usually the first ones back into the building, prior to all their staff coming back. So I don't anticipate any any issues with that, given the scope. So.
Excellent. It's exciting. It's exciting to see some of the spaces being transformed at the high school from the district office and the move that we did with the co-curricular activities and now in the office space is really great. Thank you. Exciting.
Anyone else comment question? Want to add something else?
No, I think that it's been covered.
Okay, good. I had one newbie question. Is there a certain amount of bids that have to come in before a bid is chosen?
There's not any specific requirements for that as long as it's been publicly, the public or the ads been went out for the two week duration. There isn't. We if the numbers aren't necessarily in check, we can always reject the bids. If it's way out of line or something wasn't, we feel competitive, we could reject that bid. But.
Thank you. All right. Well, if there's no more discussion, more questions or comments? Okay, Amy, go ahead.
What happens if they get in there and they realize that it's going to be a lot more expensive than expected? The twenty-five thousand dollars doesn't cover it. There's some huge damage or something that needs to be repaired.
Yeah, I bet. Yeah. Yeah, we we deal with that. I mean, again, if it if it were to come up, you know, again, working with old and Knutson in the past, they do try to mitigate a lot of that risk by, you know, going in when the school isn't in sessions, they were in there over, you know, winter break and and even over Thanksgiving break, you know, putting their head above the ceiling and looking at everything that you may not see on a daily basis. So we hope that those risks are mitigated. And that's why that number is only a percentage base. So we hope to mitigate those. If it was something that we had to mitigate afterwards, we would do it at that time and and would have to do a change order to the project to cover that cost, whatever the situation. But we would again, try to mitigate that to be as minimal as possible.
Okay. And does it ever come back to the board for any reason? Or?
Yeah, I would say that if we were to, if we were to go beyond the construction cost, we would, we would, of course, update you. And then I'm going to look to Val. I think that we, this is part of why we carry an operating capital fund balance and some things like that to help offset those costs. But I'm sure you want to handle that next part.
Sure. Um, sorry. I, we would certainly use our discretion. There's not a specific policy or anything that would drive this, but if we felt it was going to go over the the budget that you've approved or that we had in the ten-year plan, we would certainly bring back any significant changes. We, I would say are pretty tight on the LTFM with this project with the way it's increased. And so I would say any if there is anything that is, like, I kind of just want to knock on wood a little bit. Anything really significant would be likely very problematic in terms of the budget because we are pretty tight on the LTFM and maintaining that six hundred thousand. So we we do have some room, right? We choose to have fund balances for a reason, but we would certainly bring that back to the board just for awareness. So you know that it's happening, but just to make sure that you're comfortable with the strategy that we're recommending for funding it as well, if that were to happen.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. I'm seeing no further discussion. Then we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item eight is the report that we've already talked about was will be coming in future communication. And so then this concludes our business for tonight. Thank you, board members. Great discussion and questions. Our next meeting meetings are Mondays on March twenty-eighth, April eleventh and April twenty-fifth, six P M. In the district boardroom, is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, moved by Noel, second by Tom. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.